You are watching Access La Porte County Channel ninety-seven. Coming up next is the May eighth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access La Porte County dot org.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May eighth Michigan City City Council meeting. Please silence all your computer devices, stand for the political allegiance in a moment of silent prayer.
Political allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Nyla, on the roll call, please.
Mr. Beatry.
Present.
Mr. Coulter.
Present.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Dr. Cora.
Present.
Ms. Lee. Present. Ms. Moldenauer.
Present.
Mr. Joseph.
Present.
Um, Mr. Preszwalinski.
Present.
And Ms. Tillman.
And, uh, Councilwoman Tracy Tillman is on Zoom this evening with us. Uh, approval of the, uh, April sixteenth council meeting, is there a motion to approve?
More approve.
Second. Or motion to approve by Councilman Cora and seconded by Councilman Dabney, all those in favor sitting by by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Minutes are approved, reports of standing committees, and I have a, uh, a report, because I'm the liaison to the La Porte County Solid Waste District. Uh, this coming Saturday, they're going to have their seven in one, what they call their seven in one recycling event. It'll be out at the La Porte County Bargrounds from eight o'clock in the morning till one P M. And there's a number of items that they'll be accepting, they'll be accepting tires, electronics, appliances, I guess they'll be doing shredding out there, they'll accept styrofoam cardboard and household hazardous waste, including Freon, okay? But they will not be taking latex paint, because you can pop the lid and dry latex paint out and throw it in the, uh, regular trash, okay? So that's going on this Saturday, and if you need any more details about it, I'm sure you can just go on their, uh, website at solidwastedistrict dot com. And there's also an ad in today's La Porte Herald Argus that spells out what's going on Saturday, so. That's a good opportunity to get rid of your hazardous waste and other things that you don't want around the house. Uh, Finance Committee, that I know they did not have a, uh, uh, meeting this evening, uh, so nothing to report on there?
Mr. President, if you want, I can read the cash position.
Sure, uh, Councilman Cora, go ahead.
The twenty twenty-four Riverboat Fund Statement of Cash Position, um, and then in this, um, fund type, uh, twelve, fund number twenty-two thirty-five Riverboat Fund, the balance in that is three million two hundred and sixty thousand five hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. And fund number twenty-two thirty-six, which is the rainy day fund, the balance is three million six hundred and thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and eleven cents, for a total of six million eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman, uh, the claims docket this evening, uh, the claims docket, and I'll go ahead and read them. Uh, for fund twenty-two thirty-five under Riverboat Claims, there's a claims for forty-eight thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents. And there's no claims under the Boyd Development Fund, so the claims this evening are forty-eight thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents, is there a motion to pay the claims?
Some support.
Motion by Dr. Cora and seconded by Councilman Beatry, uh, Madam Clerk on the vote.
Ms. Moldenauer?
Aye.
Ms., uh, Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Preszwalinski?
Aye.
And Ms. Tillman, can she vote or no? On this?
Pardon?
Okay, Ms. Tillman?
Councilwoman Tillman, are you there? Nope. Okay, move on.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
And Ms. Lee?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla, reports of any special or select committees? Councilwoman Moldenauer?
A brief report from the Michigan City Sustainability Commission, um, held its Earth Month extravaganza this past Saturday. We had a little over four hundred attendees, we were very happy for that, even though we were hoping to meet the five hundred number mark. Yet, we had elected officials Mayor Angie Nelson Deitch, Republican, I'm sorry, Representative Pat Boy and Congressman Frank Mervon in attendance, so we were very happy about that. So very successful event again, and we didn't have the draw of live animals like we had the previous two years, so I think we did extremely well.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other, uh, reports from boards or commissions? Having none, reports of special or select committees? No reports? Reports from the mayor or other city officers and departments? And Fire Chief Taylor is here this evening?
Good evening, everybody, um, just want to give a rundown of what our calls were last month and where we stand for the year to date. Uh, last month, we had a total of three hundred and nine calls, nine of those were fire, and, uh, two hundred and thirty-nine were, uh, medical calls or rescues. The other sixty-one were miscellaneous type calls like, uh, service calls, um, fuel spills, unauthorized burning, stuff like that, false alarms, canceled en route, basically non-emergencies, um, out of those two hundred and thirty-nine medical calls, Narcan was used three times, so that's definitely less than last, uh, than March. Um, brings our current number of calls, uh, for year to date, one thousand four hundred and sixty-seven, which is twenty-five more than what we had at the same time last year, or two percent. Um, that's pretty much it as far as our calls. Uh, I did want to thank everyone that came out for the fire ops that the union put on, it was more of a union thing than an administrative thing for us. Uh, we would have provided assistance if they needed anything, um, they pretty much handled it on their own. I did come out, uh, I left in the middle to go see if one of our crews needed help with an issue they were having on a call. Um, came back and it seemed like there was a very good, uh, it was a positive, uh, everybody had positive things to say about it. So that's, that's really good, too, but I appreciate everybody that came out, even if you couldn't come out, I understand, you know, you got, got things going on. But, uh, thank you, and I hope, uh, it opened your eyes up to some things, maybe learn some things, you know, see how we do things, a little more of, uh, physical demands of the job, so that's pretty much it for me, got any questions or anything for me?
I just have a, uh, comment about the fire ops.
Yeah.
Program, yeah, I thought it was very good, I went to the first one that we had when, uh, Chief Novak was here. And I was able to participate at that time and enjoyed it immensely. You get a whole different perspective of the job of going into a burning building or smoke and everything that's in, in all the equipment that you have to wear that goes into this, and, uh, I, I really liked, this year was the demonstration with the, uh, car and the jaws of life and how, you know, dangerous it can be both for the occupant of the vehicle, but also for the firefighter with this sheet metal flying back at them and, you know, possibly cut them and that, that, that type of thing, but no, I enjoyed it very good and I appreciate it, and I think every council member should, uh, go through it and hopefully again, next year, uh, they'll have another one.
Yeah, we'll get up with the union and see what they want to do, but I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments from the council or the chief? Yeah, Councilman Beatry?
I, I kind of want to piggyback onto what Don said, uh, I, I was there also, um, saw the whole thing except for the, the guy had to leave and go to Valparaiso before the food was served, so I missed the great food, but, um, I, I learned a lot and it was really enjoyable to be there, my kudos go to my colleagues Greg Coulter and Daisy Lee, who actually did the hard work, Don and I kind of sat back and watched. But I did miss the food and I missed the picture at the end, I, I saw the news dispatch and I thought, where's that Beatry guy? I was there and I enjoyed.
I know you were there, I saw, sorry. And I appreciate you coming out, everybody else coming out, yeah, thank you for the good words, and, uh, the union would be happy with that, it'd be, it'd be, uh, happy that, uh, it did what it was supposed to do, um, so yeah, if that's all you have for me, appreciate it, thank you, have a good rest of your evening.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, Councilman, could you move your laptop, yeah, you can just scoot it back, you don't have to close it. That way, because I can't see, uh, Councilman Beatry's little green light there, okay, thank you. Uh, moving on, Madam Clerk, are there any petitions before us this evening?
Petition P dash one hundred and twenty-four rezoning R three A B two to B three parcel number forty-six dash oh five dash oh four dash four five two dash oh three six point zero 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 dash oh oh nine at the address of six twenty-five East U S Highway twenty, Michigan City, Indiana.
And Madam Chairman or Madam Clerk, are there any communications before us this evening?
In accordance with ordinance four five three eight, the clerk's office received the following incident report from the Michigan City Police Department, April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, regarding an accident that took place on April nineteenth. Correspondence was also received on April eighteenth from the Accelerate Indiana Municipalities, um, Council Members Budgeting Seminar Schedule. Correspondence was also received on April twenty-second from Michigan City Professional Firefighters Local four seven eight five to open negotiations for the renewal of current time contract. We also received a, um, correspondence on May second from Mayor Angie regarding the two proposed ordinance that are on tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, are there any resolutions before us this evening?
There are no resolutions.
No resolutions, and our first ordinance on first reading by title only, Madam Clerk?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, amending the zoning map of the city of Michigan City, La Porte County, Indiana, rezone real property located at six twenty-five East U S Highway twenty, um, parcel number forty-six dash oh five dash oh four dash four five two dash oh three six point zero 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 dash zero zero nine from the R three A Low Rise Multiple Family and B two General Commercial Zoning District Classification to a B three Highway Commercial Zoning District Classification, and this is introduced by Mr. Dabney.
And does the author have anything you'd like to add at this time?
Uh, yes, uh, this is a simple rezoning, uh, as the Kirk read, uh, from, uh, Low Rise Multi-Family and, uh, I'm sorry, in general commercial to highway, uh, commercial zoning, there's going to be a new, uh, car lot coming over there right across the street. If you picture it in your mind from the Hyundai, I mean, not Hyundai, Kia, uh, dealer out there on, uh, Highway twenty. So we have another, uh, business moving into, uh, the highway over there.
Thank you, Councilman, is anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance?
Yeah, this is Tommy Calabria, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street, yeah, they want to put a new Hyundai dealership in there, this went through the planning commission meeting last month that I attended. I know the current owner, they're, uh, eleven thousand six hundred and ten dollars to Lincoln on their property taxes, let's look at this, property back on the tax rolls and, you know, all that good stuff. You know, there's nothing wrong with having another, uh, car dealership out on U S twenty, I know, if you go down to Lafayette, we've all been to Purdue, you know, it screws up and down Sagamore Parkway there, the whole strip is nothing but there's only one Bob Roerman Car Dealerships, but, uh, no, I'm all for it, they need to, uh, I know that was the old, uh, it was an RV dealership and it was Hamilton's, all, all American Autobots and those all found the status repair. That's all going to be demolished, you have a bright new shiny car dealership going up, so it's all a good thing, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm sorry, uh, Don, I left something out, that this, uh, did come, uh, from the planning commission with a favorable recommendation, unanimous favorable recommendation.
Okay. Thank you very much, and I guess I have to, uh, read that, uh, it was advertised in the news dispatch on March fourteenth and the twenty-first twenty twenty-four, and there was a formal public hearing held by the planning commission on March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, okay? Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this ordinance, anyone else from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Having none, any further council comments? Any further council comments?
Mr. President, uh,
Go ahead, Councilman Cora.
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to be supporting, uh, this ordinance and I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor, uh, for this resolution. It's good to bring businesses into our community, uh, and improve the commercial activities, so I think this is a good thing for the city.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please add, uh, Councilman Cora as a sponsor, anyone else wish to be added as a sponsor? Okay, we will hold this ordinance over for a second reading at our next council meeting. Uh, Mr. White, Drew?
Yes.
Do we have Councilwoman Tillman now, is she, can she hear us and can we hear her? Good evening, Tracy, can you hear us?
Good evening, um, City Council Members and President Chris Balinski.
Okay, good, I know I saw there's some verbiage on the site here, you were having problems, so I'm glad we got you got you brought into the crowd here, all right, thank you. Uh, our next ordinance on first reading, Madam Clerk, by title only?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, amending section sixty-six dash thirty-one and section sixty-six dash fifty-one and chapter sixty-six of the Michigan City Municipal Code to change the name of the Human Rights Director to the Assistant Human Resource Director. And this is introduced by Mr. Beatry and Mr. Coulter.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and would the authors like to have, add anything at this time?
I, I'd like to add something, so.
Go ahead, Councilman Coulter.
We received correspondence from the mayor about the ordinances, so I'd like to read that correspondence just as a support for the, the ordinances. So that goes, dear members of the Michigan City Common Council, at your next council meeting, the two word aforementioned ordinances are on the agenda for the first reading. Currently, we have one Human Resource Director for the city, and this department is in need of additional assistance. Currently, there are approximately three hundred and eighty full-time employees and eighty seasonal employees, which is a lot for one person to manage. The position of Human Rights Director is currently vacant, and this position has been vacant since Diane Gonzalez left the role back in September twenty twenty-three. I would like to change the title of Human Rights Director to Assistant Human Resource Director. The Assistant H R Director would still be responsible for all matters pertaining to the Human Rights Department and assisting the Human Rights Commission. However, I believe that their basic H R responsibilities could easily be absorbed by the Assistant H R. Some of these additional basic H R responsibilities would include but not be limited to the following, entry of employees in the new world, onboarding of new employees, insurance matters, and F M L A paperwork. Attached here too is a proposed draft of the job description for the Assistant H R Director. Please note that the twenty twenty-four salary ordinance set the salary of the Human Rights Director at sixty-two thousand seven hundred and nine dollars and zero cents. I am asking that this salary remain at sixty-two thousand seven hundred and nine dollars and zero cents for the Assistant H R Director. Thank you in advance for your attention and consideration of this matter. If you should have any further questions or concerns, please feel free to reach out to me, very truly yours, Andrew Nelson Deitch, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, are there any, uh, other comments from the authors, Councilman Beatry?
I thi- I think the, the additional benefit to this, well, first of all, it, it fills both slots, and before we had a slot that was not filled, but norm, maybe more important than that, we'll have a position in, uh, person in both positions who will have the knowledge to run one if the other's not present. And that, that redundancy is good for city, the city hall and for any city, so I think it benefits us in two ways. And it's just another example of the mayor taking the steps that she needs to take so that the city runs more efficiently, so very much in favor of it.
Thank you, Councilman, anyone from the public wish to speak, oh, I'm sorry. Pardon? Yeah, no, you can't speak, yeah, you can afterwards, okay, I got it, all right, anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on the ordinance, anyone from the public wish to speak on the ordinance? Uh, any further council comments, Councilwoman Moldenauer, go ahead.
Thank you, President Chris Balinski, um, I think this is really a great idea, um, I can't believe that this department has been running with one person, um, it's really unbelievable. And having been on the Human Rights Commission for seven years and chair my last two years on the, um, Human Rights Commission, um, I can see that that position very well can be divided between the two, um, entities with responsibilities being covered with both, um, so I very much would request to be added as a co-sponsor on this, please.
Okay, anyone else wish to be added as a, uh, co-sponsor?
Mr. President, I, I'm going to be very supportive of this, I think this is how we need to make ourselves more efficient and more effective and constantly improving ourselves so that we can provide better service, so, um, it's a great idea and I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Okay. Councilwoman Lee?
I would also like to be added as a co-sponsor, please.
Okay, so please add Councilwoman Moldenauer, Councilwoman Lee, and Councilman Cora as co-sponsors.
Thank you.
And our next ordinance on first reading by title only, Ms. Nyla?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, amending ordinance number four seven oh seven, commonly known as the twenty twenty-four salary ordinance to reflect that the position of the Human Rights Director shall now be known as the Assistant Human Resource Director, and this is also introduced by Mr. Beatry and Mr. Coulter.
And would the authors like to add anything else? Councilman Beatry?
This, this, uh, this is just a companion ordinance to the first one we just discussed.
Okay, thank you, anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance, anybody from the public wish to speak on the ordinance, anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Having none, any further council comments, Councilwoman Moldenauer?
I would love to be added to this as a co-sponsor, please.
And add Councilwoman Moldenauer, Councilwoman Lee?
I would also like to be added as a co-sponsor, please.
Okay, and add Councilwoman Lee as a co-sponsor also? No other comments, okay, this ordinance will be held over for second reading at our next meeting. And our first ordinance on second reading this evening, uh, Ms. Nyla, by title only?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the general fund zeros on zero one zero one for the Planning and Inspection Department, and this is introduced by Mr. Beatry and Ms. Tillman.
And would the authors have anything they'd like to add at this time? Councilman Beatry?
Um, we talked about this at our last meeting as well, this really goes back to August first of twenty twenty-two where, when a, an error was made, um, and this is the correction to that error and, uh, brings thirty-four thousand dollars back, uh, into the budget to the general fund so that we can, uh, purchase vehicles.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Any further, uh?
I, I do have one.
Woman, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President, I just wanted to, uh, reiterate, um, what Councilman Beatry indicated, but you said back into the general fund, but we're actually decreasing the general fund to increase the account for other contractual services of the thirty-four thousand dollars.
Good catch, right?
Okay, thank you, anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Okay, tonight, yeah, tonight we will have a, uh, formal public hearing on this ordinance. Now, with that being said, anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance, anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance, anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Having none, any further council comments?
Yes, Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Tillman, go ahead.
I would like to request their reading on this, please, tonight.
Support. Okay, there's been a motion by Councilwoman Tillman and seconded by Councilman Beatry, correct, or was it Councilman Dabney? Okay, uh, Ms. Nyla, on the vote?
Mr. Nelson?
Uh.
Mr. uh, Preszwalinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
And Ms. Moldenauer?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Nyla, uh, with that being said, uh, this ordinance will be on third reading by title only, Ms. Nyla?
An ordinance on third reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the general fund oh one oh one for the Planning and Inspection Department, and this is introduced by Mr. Beatry and Ms. Tillman.
Are there any, any comments by the authors? Having none, okay, having none, is there any public comment? Any public comment on this ordinance, any public comment, having none? Public comment is closed, any council comments?
Motion to support?
Support, okay. Uh, I, I take that, I'm gonna take that back because Councilman Dabney had his, uh, light on before that motion was made.
That was going to make the motion, so it's gone good.
Okay, all right, I didn't know if you wanted to say something, add, add anything, okay, all right, so the, uh, motion was made by Councilman Beatry or Tracy Tillman, correct, and seconded by Councilman Beatry, Ms. Nyla, on the vote?
Mr. Preszwalinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Moldenauer?
Aye.
And Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Yes, Councilwoman?
As a point of order, is, um, Councilwoman Tillman able to vote since she's not here in the chambers, this is a financial matter?
Oh, on this, on this particular?
She, she's allowed to vote for financial matters as long as it's not a, uh, flat budget.
Thank you very much for clarification.
Say that one more time.
Always do that, sorry. She's allowed to vote for the appropriation, it's not just that she can't vote for a financial matter, she cannot vote to approve a budget. So when you do your annual budget and she cannot vote to pass a tax, those are the.
Those are the two things.
Well, it's multiple things, but as it relates to finance, those are the two things that cannot be done.
But as far as this next one where we're voting on funding, she can vote on that.
Just for an appropriation, I.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
Very good question. Okay, Ms. Nyla, our next ordinance on second reading?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the general fund oh one oh one for the vector control department, and this is introduced by Mr. Dabney, Ms. Lee, Mr. Preszwalinski, Mr. Beatry, and Mr. Coulter.
And do the authors have anything they'd like to add at this time? And do the authors have anything they'd like to add at this time? Okay, having none, anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the? Okay, tonight is also another formal public hearing, thank you. Tonight will there will be a formal public hearing held on this ordinance. So at this time, is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on the ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Having none, public comment is closed. Is there any council comment? Councilman Dabney?
And uh, since we had the uh, formal public hearing on this, I would like to make the request that we hear this on third reading tonight.
Second.
There's been a motion by Councilman Dabney for third reading tonight, seconded by Councilman Cora. Ms. Nyala on the vote?
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Moldenar?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
And Mr. Preszbalinski.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, Ms. Nyala, if you would please, uh, the same ordinance on third reading by title only?
An ordinance on second, third reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the General Fund oh one oh one for the Vector Control Department. Excuse me, introduced by Mr. Dabney, Ms. Lee, Mr. Preszbalinski, Mr. Beatry, and Ms. Coulter.
And do the authors have anything they'd like to add at this time? Having none, anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Having none, uh, council comments? And there is, there is one comment I'd like to add before somebody makes a uh, motion is that these mowers were in desperate need last year in October when the uh, you know, previous administration was here and they had wanted to go out and get bids at that time, because they could have got the mowers at a cheaper price. They were on sale at the end of the year. Well, at that time, the administration said, no, don't do it. So they were left with old mowers. And these mowers, the safety devices on the mowers, and I don't know what every safety device is. But I'm gonna say on every mower, the safety devices were not working, or at least on seventy five percent, I believe. Pardon? Yeah, so the mower shouldn't have been even running to begin with. Whenever you have a device, whether it's a vehicle, whether it's a mower, a blower, what have you, if the safety device is defunct on it, you do not use it. Because you're putting a, you're putting number one, the person at risk of getting hurt. And number two, you're putting the city at liability. If that individual does get hurt, you're gonna be paying a lawsuit for putting that person in a unsafe condition. So that's the way I look at things and hopefully, uh, you know, other council members will look at it the same way. So it's not for the sake of buying five new mowers and get them out there and start cutting grass. So, are there any other comments by council members? Any other comments? We're on third reading here.
Motion to approve?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Beatry and the second by Councilman Cora on the vote, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Moldenar?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Preszbalinski?
Aye.
And Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Uh, excuse me, I have a question. I I was, I thought I heard this one read into creating uh, section two, four forty in the Michigan City Municipal Code, because when they read the sponsors. Okay. All right. Excuse my my momentary mental lapse.
Got ahead of himself.
June, can you edit that?
That happens. I did that the other day at the Board of Works meeting. I had to go sit down. I got up to under public comment on our whole totally different subject. Yeah. Anyway. Okay, uh, our next ordinance, our final ordinance on uh, second reading by title only?
An ordinance on an ordinance on second reading by title only, creating section two dash four four oh in the Michigan City Municipal Code to establish general rules for all city boards and commissions. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney, Mr. Coulter, Mr. Preszbalinski, and Mr. Beatry.
And what I'd like to do at this time, being one of the authors, is to make a author's amendment. Okay, so what that means, if I make a, a motion, then I have to get a uh, a second on that for the new council members that don't understand that.
I'll support that.
Yeah, so Councilman Beatry has made the uh, the second, the motion. And what the amendment is, is the addition of committees. The the redlined, underlined, uh, words, verbiage here. So in the title, it'll say boards, commissions, and committees. And under the, in the first paragraph, whereas the city has several established boards, commissions, and committees. And I think there's one more spot. Yeah, thanks, Doctor. Yeah, under section two dash four four zero, general rules for all city boards, commissions, and committees. And also under the compliance with the Indiana Open Door Law, same thing, all city boards, commissions, and committees. Okay, so it covers everything. Very clear. Now, it was a good point that was brought up and we got it taken care of and move on our way. So, there's been a motion in a second on that. On the vote, Ms. Nyala?
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Still approved the amendment, okay.
Sorry, Ms. Nyala, is it my vote?
No, it's been.
Oh, me too, Dabney. Man, I'm really blowing it tonight, man. Crazy.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Mul- Ms. Moldenar?
Aye.
Ms. Nelson, Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Preszbalinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
And Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, uh, so we have to have, that was the author's amendment that was made. And now, is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance?
Oh, hi, this is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. You know, one of the powers and authorities that you have as a council, you know, a lot of these uh, boards and commissions are actually established by ordinance. Unless the board commission is set up by statute, you can't repeal it. But there's one, I I went through the law of the boards and commissions, seeing the ones that be- being resident. One you need to repeal is section two dash four six two of the Youth Leadership Commission. I believe that was established like five years ago and the people you pointed that, they're probably no longer able to serve on youth commission. I think that that's just kind of a waste of having that on the books, so you need to repeal that. Oh, I'm I'm all for this, you know, I don't um, this, just go ahead and pass. You shouldn't just move this third reading past, it's all good. I know for the conflict of interest and, I mean, I know about ten years ago, like like having a social media page. Uh, I don't remember, a woman came before the Board of Works in South Bend, she wanted to put advertising on all the bus shelters. But the the, they denied it because they said the city has to have more control over what they're advertising. Was the same with these social media pages. They say you gotta have control over what goes on and then uh, put in the content of these uh, social media pages. I know the only one that does the commission on the social status, they already discussed today about taking it down, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else from the uh, public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Are there any further council comments, Councilman Dabney?
Yes, I'm gonna do my best this time. And uh, Tommy, I do understand what you were saying about the Youth Commission. And you know, the disbanding that or whatever, but if we keep it on the books, it's always there in case it's brought up four years from now, five years from now. So the the statute was already set and the ordinance is already out there. So we can just leave it sit just in case somebody decides to bring that back up. We don't have to reestablish that that board. So we can just leave it as is, it's not filled, it's not doing anything. So uh, we can leave it out there until maybe, like I said, maybe three years from now, somebody wants to bring that up and and start that again. But I thought about that, though. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Beatry?
I know when we, this went through uh, first reading, there was some discussion about uh, doing something about attendance, making sure that the people attend their meetings. And um, there are in the municipal code, four of these commissions that where attendance is specifically addressed. It's the social status of African American males where five days is the limit you can miss. Uh, that's in section two, four fifty seven. In section two, four fifty eight, public arts. If you miss two in a row, you can be dismissed from that committee. Section two, four fifty nine is the commission for women where you can be removed for absenteeism, but it's not specific. And then section two, four sixty one, the Sustainability Commission, anyone who misses three in a row can be dismissed. So if if you as a committee person are a liaison to any of those four, you can just go to the municipal code and look at section two, four fifty seven, four fifty eight, four fifty nine, or four sixty two, and then talk to the the uh, chair of your committee. And those four at least already have specific language in them to control missing meetings. The others are not as specific.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other council comments on this? Councilwoman Lee, go ahead.
Uh, in regards to the Youth Commission, I am currently working to reestablish the Youth Commission and I have several interested candidates. So we should be up and running by the end of the summer or early fall.
Good, very good. Yes, Councilwoman Mullenhour?
Yeah, since the ordinance has been amended now to include committees, um, I request to be added as a co-sponsor on this, please.
Any other council comments? All right, we will hold this over to third reading and our next council meeting. Uh, let's see. Under new business, there is no new business. Under unfinished business, the council has one appointment to the Fire Merritt Commission due to Tommy Kalavich's resignation. The term will begin immediately and expire twelve thirty one twenty twenty six. So tonight, we will only take nominations. At the next meeting, we will vote on the nominations. Okay? Councilman Beatry, you have a question?
I'd like to uh, nominate uh, Dr. Bill Esper.
Okay, and council attorney? So you nominate, you have to get a second for that nomination? You have to get a second for the nomination?
You're not getting, you're you're just doing the nomination.
Yeah.
Nominating for it. No, you don't.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay. Councilwoman Mullenhour?
I nominate um, Andy Heineck.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Tillman, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to nominate Mr. Paul Preszbalinski.
Okay, add Paul Preszbalinski to the list. And are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Nominations are now closed. So we will vote at our next meeting. Thank you. Unfinished uh, business, we just got, don't get comments from the public. Comments from the public?
Oh, yes, Tommy Kalavich, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. As far as Councilwoman Nancy Mowers, uh, of her nomination for Andy Heineck, I know our ordinance states you can't be a a member of a police or a fire, you can't have more than two that's a member of a police or a fire uh, agency. I know Captain Heineck, he's the chief of detectives for the La Porte County Sheriff's Office. We already have two fa- former firemen. You can't have a current and you can't have more than two former fire police. I know Mike Nyala was a fa- was a fireman and Greg Deutscher was a fireman. And also you have to be a resident of the uh, the unit for three years. It was basically the civil city of Michigan City and the town of Potawatomi Park, because we provide the fire coverage for them. And he's, I believe Andy Heineck is the resident of Rolling Prairie, so I think he'd be disqualified from from serving on the Fire Merritt Commission. I certainly want to congratulate Braden Fisk. Uh, you know, he got drafted by the Los Angeles Rams, picked number thirty uh, thirty nine in the second round of the draft. They've already got his merchandise and apparel on uh, dropped on uh, nflshop.com and Fanatics. They already wore his fifty five Fisk jersey, you know, um. The NFL is gonna be releasing their uh, schedule next week. I know um, in week six, they're gonna play the Bears at uh, Soldier Field, and then the week seven, they're gonna play the Lions at Ford Field. I I plan on attending both of those. Uh, I know they're gonna have a workshop tomorrow about Yarpur money. Uh, I I I'm against this homeward bound uh, thing they're gonna put out on on Carvick Road. Uh, they they just need, you know, that's no benefit to the city. And if you have put those up, I think you're gonna have all kinds of people wanting to put those up, you know. I'd like to pull up a couple of those up on my back lot. You know, I got a couple of young adults, they like to get out of my house, you know, a place for Ray Ray. Yeah, yeah, so I I signed up to go on the tour for the Fifth and Pine Grayfield site, you know, they well, I know we're probably gonna, probably probably get get some development seen there. So on that, I just wanna wish you all a, a good day and and good, good job, everybody. Good meeting tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Kalavich. Anyone else from the public wish to speak this evening? Anyone else from the public wish to speak this evening? Okay, very well. Council comments? Councilman Cora?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, a couple of things I want to talk about, uh, to about tonight. One is I did attend the tree board meeting uh, last week and um, uh, under the chairmanship of Mayor Neil Murphy, it was a very productive meeting, a lot was accomplished. Um, and our, our brist uh, also participated in the meeting and it was a productive meeting. I also want to talk about uh, tonight, uh, Mr. President, about education uh, in our community. Uh, and we have a teacher uh, sitting right next to me here, uh, uh, Councilman Daisy Lee. Um, I had the opportunity of attending uh, the Michigan City Economic Development Corporation's uh, gala event last weekend. Uh, where um, our school superintendent, Dr. Barbara Easton Watkins, was honored. Uh, she received the Lifetime Achievement Award for her contributions uh, uh, to Michigan City education as the superintendent of Michigan City Area Schools. Uh, she has served us for about fourteen years. She has done an exemplary job. She'll be retiring soon. And I want to publicly express my gratitude to her for her tremendous service. And I also suggest that as a council, we uh, we have a formal resolution appreciating the service uh, to the community. Um, talking about education, I also wanted to uh, uh, thank all all, all the members, whoever have been involved in the resumption of the Triangle Bus Route, uh, which will be starting soon. Um, we had started this in twenty twelve, um, when Chancellor Dworkin was here at PNW. Um, one of the reasons we did that was because we didn't want any Um one of the reasons we did that was because we didn't want any um young adult in Michigan City not to pursue uh college education, uh not going, being able to go to community college because of lack of transportation. Um and now, uh in, in, in the age we live in, the, the education is critically important uh for their personal growth, for the economic development of their family as well as our community. So I think this Triangle Bus Route uh will help us get there by giving an opportunity for those individuals who do not have transportation uh to go to Westville to use this bus route uh to access that education. So I'm very grateful to all of those who have um uh been helpful in resuming this service. Those are a couple of comments I had, Mr. President. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Any other council comments? Councilman Beatry?
I just wanna give a uh, an enthusiastic shout out to the Salvation Army and to Jessica O'Brien and the whole crew there for the Hands of Hope. Uh it was a volunteer appreciation lunch that they put on on April twenty-sixth. It was my honor to represent City Council there. Uh the, the purpose of the meeting really was to, to recognize the ins- inspiration of many volunteers in Michigan City who work with them and help them to operate. Uh it was incredible. In twenty twenty-three uh those volunteers donated six thousand seven hundred and twenty-four hours of service to Salvation Army. That's almost twenty hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Uh that's an honor to the city and to them. And uh congratulations to all of them, and we all owe you. Thank you.
Councilwoman Lee?
I would like to give a shout out to the firefighters at Station One. Uh they came out on Friday with my eighth graders for a student-led project to clean up Strebil Pond. So thank you to them for helping clean that up with us.
Any other comments by council members? I have a few comments. Number one, uh I was at the uh Economic Development Luncheon or Supper also as uh Councilman Cora was, and our own park superintendent, and I wanna read a blurb here, Shannon Easton. Uh congratulations to Michigan City Park and Recreation Department Superintendent Shannon Easton on receiving the Economic Development Leadership Award at the Economic Development Corporation uh Business Appreciation Night. Shannon is a lifelong Michigan City resident and has worked for the Parks Department since nineteen ninety-five. Having started as a payroll clerk and working her way up through the ranks. Her priorities include preservation, public access, historical restoration, and the environment. And she, she is known for spearheading the Singing Sands Trail Project and working with Save the Dunes to remove invasive species. And among the other hats Shannon has worn, she has served as the Chair of the Trail Creek Watershed Partnership, Treasurer of the Michigan City Public Arts Committee, and member of the Stormwater Advisory Group, Michigan City Wolves Environmental Restoration Team, and Northwest Indiana Regional Planning Commission Ped, Pedal, and Paddle Committee. And again, congratulations to Shannon on a much, a much well-deserved recognition. And thank you all for making Michigan City a great place to live, work, and play. Uh another thing, cuz I always get phone calls about this one, is when the uh yard waste pickup begins and I get phone calls, I get every neighbor in an, hey, Don, hey, Don. Then I gotta say, hey, I'll be right back. I gotta go check cuz I'm not sure either. But anyway, that is gonna start next Monday, May thirteenth. Yard waste pickup starts in Michigan City. And just real quick, uh you can use your garbage cans, not your toters, and paper bags, but no plastic bags and no toters can be used for yard waste. And of course, there's other details that go along with it, but and just real quick. So if your regular pickup is on Monday, your compost is on Wednesday. Pickup Tuesday, compost Thursday. If your pickup is Wednesday, compost is Friday. If your pickup is Thursday, your compost is Monday. And if your pickup is Friday, your compost is Tuesday. And I know everybody remembered all that, but if you didn't remember all that, you can go to the Michigan City website and the mayor's assistant put it on the website today to make sure it's there for everybody in the uh, in the public to know. And let's see, citywide cleanup. Oh, for the parking garage downtown here, uh at the new train station development, they are going to start bringing the concrete parking garage pieces into the St. Anthony Parking Lot area, I believe around the twenty-eighth of May. And then from there, they're gonna take them down Law Bear Street to Tenth Street. Take a right, take them down to the uh construction site. And according to Skyler, the Code Enforcement and Inspection Department is gonna go up and down Law Bear Street and hand out notices to all the uh residents that live there to notify them what's going on, when you can park on the street, and when you can't park on the street. So that's a big date for that part of uh Michigan City in that particular neighborhood. And another thing that I'd like to, and I've requested this to the Planning and Inspection Department previously on a couple of times, that I, I think, take for example, here we are in springtime again. Lot of people don't know what the codes are in the city and the rules and regulations for like yards. How high your grass can be, where you can plant things in your yard, not just all over your yard and on the easements. Uh you can't block the sidelines at intersections with vegetation. Uh you're not supposed to be parking on sidewalks. You're not supposed to be parking on easements. You know, this year here, we're spending a hundred thousand dollars on brand-new sidewalks, and that's just the first go-around. And so you put in a new sidewalk and the people park on top of it. I mean, that's, that's, to me, other, other council members may not think it's a big deal. I do, because sidewalks are made for people to walk on, and they're made for people to push, let children walk on the sidewalks, ride their bikes, and mothers uh to push strollers and for handicapped people to be able to walk in, you know, with their walkers or in wheelchairs. So hopefully, we're gonna start getting that uh addressed. But just in general, I always thought it'd be a good idea to send out either quarterly or six times a year or monthly in the water bills on the code enforcement issue of the month and what people should know for this month. And the Water Department will do it at no charge. All the city has to do is pay for the paper and ink and the postage. Yeah, the Water Department's not gonna pay for that, but they'll take care of, they'll take care of all that. So I just, I was just hoping that the Inspection Department would take that and run with it and try to get, get some of these things that I consider issues in the neighborhoods. And in order to make the neighborhoods look nicer and be more functionable and more livable for people and for the neighbors to be proud where they live, that the city has to show some leadership and to educate the general public, I believe, on, on what has to happen there. And my last uh comment is I know the double track is here. They're gonna have the ribbon cutting on the double track next Monday over in Gary, Indiana. And I'm sure we all got notice of it. If you wanted to go there, you know, they invite you or you get an invitation. And that's all well and good. And I know it's gonna be good for development. But I just want all the city council members to be aware of, get in your car and go for a ride from Sheridan Ave on the west side of Tenth Street. I think that's Sheridan Ave, the farthest west street on Tenth Street, okay? And drive that all the way down to Michigan Boulevard. And just look at some of the condition of some of the lots that these construction companies have left Michigan City with. There was also, take for example, that from Sheridan Ave down to the Amtrak railroad tracks, cuz they had to build new easements there between Tenth Street and where the fence is at for the railroad track. So you get, you have about a twenty-foot easement there, okay? And I know I, I asked the same question to Skyler, and Skyler is looking into it with the city engineer now that who's gonna, who's gonna maintain that? Whose responsibility is it to cut that grass? Whose responsibility is it to go down there and clean that litter up? Is NIKTIA gonna go down there? Are they gonna have guys there once a week doing that? Or is the city gonna have to have our vector control that has, what, seven employees in it? It has eight employees. They can't keep up with what they have. Now are we gonna be tasked with having to be, uh, hire more people? Hire more lawn mowers? Hire all this at our expense for the expense of NIKTIA to make more profit, to get more trains coming in and out of Michigan City? So then you leave that. So you go from there. So then go to Kentucky Street and Eleventh. And there was a gigantic triangle there, okay? That has nothing but weeds in it. And who's gonna cut that? Who's gonna maintain that? It's huge. It's, it's huge. It's always, the footprint is probably, well, not as big as City Hall, but it's big. So then you keep going further east down Eleventh Street. And it all looks beautiful now, but the easements that they put in between the curb and the sidewalk going along the sidewalk, well, you have beautiful side there, but now some of that side is already eight inches tall because the people that live, and the majority of those residents down there are renters. And I don't think they could care one red cent about what their lawn looks like. So who's gonna be stuck doing that when all of a sudden we got the boat race coming to town? And oh, we gotta get the city looking good. Uh Mr. Kelly, get out there, get your crew out there and cut everything down and make it look nice for one weekend. Who's paying for that? The residents are paying for it. Now, let's go further down where the old, I think it was the Presbyterian Church was at on the curb there. That's by Lafayette. And there's another little side street there. I can't remember. But where that church used to be, you take a ride down there and look at it. And I don't know if that's the First Ward or the Fourth Ward or Fifth Ward, whatever it is. But that lot is filled with pieces of concrete, dirt, litter, construction debris. And then you go right across the street from Lafayette over to, let's see, Yark Street, I believe is the next street over. And that big lot, there is a huge, huge lake in the middle of it. And it was kinda cute today cuz there was a mother duck and a daddy duck swimming in there. And that's, that's great. So but the lot is just litter, concrete, dirt, uneven piles. There's no grass. And if, if they planted anything, they planted weeds to let the weeds grow. And what, the residents gotta get up every day and they gotta look at this stuff, the people that live there? I don't live there. I live over on Gardena Street, so I won't look at it other, every day. And Doctor, he doesn't live there. Nancy doesn't live there. But the residents that live there? I mean, we gotta have some kind of heart and care for what these people are left with. And we gotta stand up for the city of Michigan City, so we're not gonna get stuck with paying bills for going out maintaining lots that we don't even own. We don't own those lots. NIKTIA owns this stuff, as far as I know. I, it's unfair to the city. I want NIKTIA to be as successful as they are. I want the double track to be as successful as it are. But we're the stewards of the city. And we got elected by the residents of the city. And we got elected by the people that live around these and not very nice-looking areas right now. And they gotta be corrected. And I'm not gonna stop you know, as long as I'm on this council, to make sure that those areas get taken care of. And we're not, I'm not paying for them. And I'm not gonna sit here and endorse any kind of resolution or ordinance to go out and pay for somebody else's carelessness that they don't care about, and they're leaving the city of Michigan City flipping the bill. I'm not trying to be negative, not being negative to NIKTIA. I'm just trying to stand up for what I think is right and the way I was brought up. If you do a job, you don't leave it until it's done and it's done right. So with that being said, uh, anyone else from the public who should speak? I mean, from, anyone else from the council who should speak? No, sir, public comment is over? No, I, no, I miss, I misspoke. Public comment was over. This was council comment at this time. Pardon? Sir, I want, up to the council members, can we indulge? Yes, come on, sir. You're welcome.
So, good evening. My name is Sal Donald. I'm seven twenty-nine East Michigan Boulevard. Um you have there a birthday invitation. I'm, my, tomorrow's my birthday and I'm having a surprise birthday party. Um you spoke very well.
Thank you, sir.
Direct to the point. The best time to really take a tour of your community is Sunday morning, early Sunday morning. There's nobody out. The jitterbells have gone to bed. The holy folk haven't got up yet. So you can drive as slow through the alleys with no interruption. I encourage you all to take me up on that sometime because I do it. When I lived in Chicago, that was the way I went and studied neighborhoods, driving through them to see what could be done. That corner you're talking about there at Detroit and Lafayette, where the church used to be, there's a hearse that's been there for twenty years, a white hearse. That's another thing that the city really needs to take a hard look at in terms of letting folks know. We're gonna start eliminating those unsightly desperate areas that really need our attention. It's a psychological effect on folk when you have to look at that all the time. I think I've shared with you that a study done by the CDC, American Medical Association, the Ford Foundation, University of Pennsylvania, basically all arrived at a conclusion saying that it can drive you nuts. Particularly so as an adult owning property, your property value is affected. A home should be more than just a place to come in and out of the rain. It's an investment. And the way that you protect the property value is that you keep your property up, but you don't tolerate things that drag your property value down. I had planned on also bringing you all a copy of a, of an item that was in the newspaper, May tenth, two thousand eight. That was the, I celebrated my birthday by dumping a wheelbarrow full of trash off of my block where I was living at the time. The city had passed up my street unnecessarily. the, that spring as well as the following, the the previous fall. Now, you mentioned Mr. Kelly. I'm so proud of him. I've known him since he was a kid. I'm very much into recycling, very much into recycling. This is one of the things that we can do to encourage the commercial part of our community to get involved, and I think this box by Domino's says a lot in terms of them trying to participate in recycling. I kept this because it represents something that we can do in terms of eliminating the trash and debris that end up on our streets. Back in the seventies, McDonald's had a policy that they would clean up if they were on a corner going each way for one block, picking up trash and debris. We can involve more of our, all of our commercial outlets to do that. I shared many of the things that I have collected over the years with our Vector Control Director. I'm going to share with him more in terms of my experience in working in this area. Folk, I worked for the Officer Recycling in Washington DC in the early nineties.
Mr. Dunlop, if you could summarize?
Well, I want to thank you for this time. Sorry I'm late. I don't have any way of proving this to you, but I was cleaning up my yard, which made me late. I want to thank you for this time.
I believe, I believe what you said. You were cleaning your yard up. I believe that. Okay, thank you. All right, with that being said, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Meeting is now done.